We are on the air.
Call to order, the March ninth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Board of Selectmen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Frank. On a different planet.
And first item, approval of minutes from February twenty fourth, twenty twenty, regular meeting, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of February twenty fourth, twenty twenty.
Second, moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Yes, that sounds right. Next up, hour of seven o'clock, we have a meeting with our legislative delegation to discuss legislative priorities. Here with us tonight is all four of our members, Senator James Eldridge, Senator Harriet Chandler, Representative Harold Naughton, Representative Danielle Gregoire. Thank you all for being here, we appreciate your being able to take the time to meet with us. We have this party once a year and we certainly like to have everybody in the room. We also have with us Superintendent Greg Martino and I believe I saw a school committee member Joan Frank here as well, so they'll be able to participate in the school-related issues. So with that said, I think I'll turn it over to our town administrator, John Cordera, to walk us through the legislative priorities that we have in mind this year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have a party once a year, but as you know, we're in contact constantly throughout the year on any number of issues. As is our tradition in Northborough, we try not to, at this meeting, pepper you with a hundred different bills and there are a lot of things that are before the two bodies. The MMA is very active, what we try to do here tonight is focus on, you know, the top two or three things that mean the most to your constituents in Northborough and the most to the Board of Selectmen in terms of the biggest impact on the operations for us. So I have a couple of things, a couple of major things and a few minor things that we just want to touch upon. It should be no surprise to the delegation that one of our top priorities is the Chapter Ninety transportation funding. I just want to first of all, thank you, the House and our House Representatives for passing a bill that does increase, or would increase, our Chapter Ninety funding from two hundred million statewide to three hundred million. And just by way of framing up why this is so critical to us, we have a very extensive pavement management plan in Northborough, we know exactly how we would spend that money and we can tell you exactly what will, it will do to our overall pavement condition index. So right now, when we started, Northborough did a comprehensive analysis of all of our roads back in twenty thirteen, we know we need to spend one point one million dollars a year. And if Chapter Ninety is at three hundred million statewide, that gets Northborough between our, our funding and the state funding to our target. And we've been able to maintain that target figure for the last couple of years by using one-time revenues through our free cash to get up to that one point one million dollar figure. That's difficult for us and it's not a reliable revenue source, so with the state going to three hundred million, that would get us to our minimum target. And the reason why that's so critical for us is, over the next ten years, if we hit that target, our roads overall will improve slightly. If we don't hit that target, our roads overall are going to deteriorate. We all know, once a road is lost, it's four times more expensive to replace a completely lost road than it is to maintain the roads that you have now. We have been locally putting in more money than we get in Chapter Ninety, so we have a minimum of eight hundred thousand dollars that, that we're putting in on the town side. So it's not as though we're ignoring this issue. The state brings in roughly about five hundred thousand dollars of, of funding for us and moving it to that, to that next level, and this is something we've been talking about and the MMA has consistently been advocating for, really would make all the difference from us trying to patch it together to hit that minimum funding versus us being on a really solid infrastructure investment schedule with dedicated revenues that we can count on. So the key is the extra funding, but also we're hoping for a multi-year appropriation. But obviously, if you want to give us three hundred million on an annual basis, we're not going to argue with that plan either. So that, that's our, one of our top two priorities. The other is a more general kind of commentary to help to explain to our delegation as well to the residents, some of the things that are going on in terms of the overall budget impacts that we're facing in Northborough. And really, it comes down to what's happening with our local aid, our state aid. And it's hard to explain to folks why, when they read in the paper, things like the Student Opportunity Act and it's one point four billion dollars over the next seven years or so to get funding for education to where it ought to be. But our state aid, the town of Northborough specifically, our state aid is going up one percent, maybe two percent. Under the governor's plan, when we look at state aid and then factor in the assessments, because it's the net impact of those two things, right now, our state aid is projected to go up zero point eight nine percent, so less than one percent. And the reason why that's so critical for us is that state aid as a percentage of our operating budget in two thousand and three was thirteen point one percent. I know I'm throwing a lot of numbers out here, but just, it's about trend for us and we included a graph here that shows it was a high in two thousand and three of thirteen point one percent. State aid now makes up eight point eight percent. So in order for us to maintain services, we need about a three and a half, four percent budget increase every year. State aid has been less than half of that. So as a revenue for us, to provide education and public safety and all the things that we do, state aid has been steadily declining for the last ten years. And I know Greg Martino, the superintendent, is here, we've had many conversations about the Student Opportunity Act and Northborough isn't seeing anything really additional through that. And so one of the things that we, in terms of our overall state aid, that we would be interested in hearing from you about is whether or not there's any appetite to increase the minimum funding, because Northborough is a minimum aid community. So there's a hundred and seventy-four communities under the Student Opportunity Act that really aren't going to see any additional state aid. So putting aside whether or not the Student Opportunity Act is a good thing, and I understand you're trying to get the revenues to the, where the needs are the most, nevertheless, it means less revenues coming back to Northborough and a continuing slide in terms of state aid as a, as a help to us. And really, the outcome of that is very simple, it just means that more, more tax impact on the local properties, that's the translation. So within the grouping of state aid, the Student Opportunity Act, which again, the minimum, the minimum aid of thirty dollars per student, we're hoping, we're much in support of the MMA's position that, that we'd like to see that at a hundred, that's the only way the town of Northborough is going to see any additional funding under the Student Opportunity Act. Special education circuit breaker, which I'm hoping to hear from you tonight, I think you have some good news for us that we're moving in the right direction on that. Regional transportation is another thing that impacts us, we are a regional school system at the high school level. And then unrestricted general government aid, I appreciate, at least under the governor's budget, proportionate to the revenue consensus hearing at the state level of two point eight percent. But as we show in this, in this analysis, if Chapter Seventy, which is our school aid, is roughly seventy-four percent of what we get in aid from the state, the unrestricted is only twenty-two percent. So when nothing's happening on the Chapter Seventy side, that's when you see results like what we've shown you here, which is less than a one percent increase in state aid. So just more of a conversation about that, I know things are limited, but if the minimum contribution or the minimum student aid under Chapter Seventy could be increased, that would be a way to help out those hundred and seventy-four districts of which we are one that are minimum aid only. So we're hoping you can give that some consideration. So those are two kind of big pieces and then we have a few other smaller things in here. I understand that OPEB, post-employment benefits, that there's really nothing happening in this cycle, so we don't really want to spend, I don't think too much time on that, I don't think there's a bill that's got legs that anybody's really discussing, but that still is an issue that we would like to keep on your radar for the next session. Unfunded mandates in general, anytime you can be supportive in opposing those or providing funding, it's greatly appreciated. And then we also are a municipal vulnerabilities community, so climate change and, and the impacts on our community are important to us, so we just completed the planning for that. And so next session, we're hoping to be submitting for some infrastructure grants, so we're hoping that you're in support of those climate change bills. And then last but not least, I just want to thank you all for your support and sponsoring and advocating for the agricultural composting bill that we have, that would make large-scale commercial composting operations located on a farm subject to local land use regulations. And you've all been very supportive of that, in particular, Harriet Chandler as the main sponsor, spent a lot of time with our office on that particular issue and maybe before we depart this evening, if we can get maybe an update on, on where that bill is. So I know I threw a lot at you, but I also know that you have this in advance and so the folks in the audience are having a little trouble keeping up with the numbers, but I know you guys have this stuff. But those are really the things that we're hoping to have a bit of a dialogue with you this evening regarding.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, unless some of the committee members want to, pardon me, jump in there.
I'd be happy to invite you to off your comments first on, on these topics.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, in regard to the transportation piece, the three hundred million dollars, that's been a topic of discussion every year and this was a great opportunity to find a funding piece, a revenue piece, a tax piece, let's use the real terms for it, to be able to provide that. And it would be our hope and intent that that would be a multi-year option as we go forward. Those, the delegations from this part of the state, be it the Metro West delegation and on the other end of my district, what we call the, the North County delegation, all met with Chairman Mickelwitz, the Chair of the Committee on, on Ways and Means, to express our concerns that the revenue piece that we passed last week and the accompanying bond piece would, would overwhelmingly address the issues of the MBTA. We've worked our hardest to make sure that issues addressing our communities and our constituents in this part of the Commonwealth were addressed as well, including the need for road, road monies in Chapter Ninety, but also to take into account the fact that towns like Northborough are on the tip of the spear of the congestion that's happening east of here. And because of the great work that your town has done in planning and forward planning, I think you've been able to avoid some of those problems, but we're trying to bring to the table resources that will help continue to protect, protect the quality of life in this town through that legislation, through several pieces that we also offered in the, in the bond bill, which we will provide to the town as it goes forward and gets over to the Senate. Among them, increase in funding for the regional transit authorities, WRTA. As you know, towns a second step over from the city of Worcester get very limited support from the WRTA, and, and it's not just here, it's around, you know, the Commonwealth. The old traditional model of, of bus companies is, is pretty much disappeared. So we're working on shuttle routes, on hub routes. I know we've talked to the town of Berlin along with the senior center here in Northborough to create shuttle routes and hub routes that would allow members of the community, be taken to a hospital or whatever other needs that they have. And we were trying to expand that beyond, beyond, beyond just the, the senior community. So tho, those are some of the priorities that this delegation, our, our House delegation from this part of the Commonwealth had expressed to the Chairman of Ways and Means. I think we were successful in that and we'll keep working as we go through the budget cycle, the FY twenty-one budget, over the next couple of months to enhance that, as we will on the education piece. John is right, the, the Student Opportunity Act did a lot, but it didn't do everything. And there were a lot of communities that we were, we would seek, including Northborough, that we would seek better support for as we go forward in the FY twenty-one budget to add to what the Student Opportunity Act did. Not just in the bottom line funding of Chapter Seventy and, and the local aid, but for, I think we've done well on the circuit breaker over the last few years, I would anticipate seeing more. Additionally, the regional school transportation, which Leslie and I discussed earlier in the evening, I think because of, what we had said, what I said to Chairman, the Chair of Ways and Means is, if you cannot take care of us in this part of the state in the revenue, in the Transportation Revenue Act, then we're going to come back to you looking for more help in the budget as it comes up in FY twenty-one. So as far as the agricultural issues in the town, we're proud to have led the way and John, you were very nice to call a few weeks ago. And now and then you get an opportunity in, in, in budget documents, in budget vehicles to be, to find some funding for towns that would have otherwise been unexpected and we're happy to get the hundred and fifty thousand, John?
Yes.
Reimbursement to the town for the litigation fees in the, in regard to the Anza Farm ongoing disaster. I don't, I don't think I'm exaggerating on that, taking a chance on getting a punch thrown at me again like I did a few years ago. But, so again, we're there to continue to support and stay on top of the Attorney General's offices as, as that issue goes on, so.
If I may add a couple of things to what Chairman Naughton said as far as transportation goes, I think it's important to point out a few other projects that were highlighted, both partially in the revenue piece of what we did and then partially in the bond piece of what we did. Working with our colleagues from out this way, we were able to create some language that would create an MBTA Office of Transit Parking and Scrutiny so that we understand as we're making investments along the lines that serve the residents of this district, what the parking needs are versus what the investment might be, so that we're not doing it sort of piecemeal and maybe putting more parking where there isn't a need or where we aren't putting enough parking where there is a need. That having been said, it worked with my colleagues that represent the town of Westborough in the House, we secured two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for increased parking at the Westborough Commuter Rail Station, which I'm sure serves a good amount of folks that live here in Northborough.
Serves me.
You're welcome, Jason. We don't have to get to the six thirty train anymore. And then, over the last couple of years, I've been working with the city of Marlborough to work on sort of a last mile solution to one of the challenges that we've been facing. And the city of Marlborough, with some budget money that I was able to obtain for them, has purchased a small bus and is able to use it to get folks from the downtown to either the Westborough or Southborough commuter rail stations. And then during the day, that bus is used to take seniors and veterans to medical appointments or things that they need to do, so it sounds like it could be something that could be replicated for this town and for some of the other surrounding communities, so it's certainly something that we would be willing to work with you on moving forward. We've had great success in, I think we're now in the third year of funding for that program and it's, it's tough, you know, to get people to use something that they're not sure whether it's going to continue. So we've been trying to get the funding out far in advance enough so that we can guarantee their ability to ride that method of transit for any given amount of time so that they can be confident that they'll be getting to and from work. Because as we all know, which is why this Transit Parking and Scrutiny Office was so important to us, that if you're not at either Southborough or Westborough for the first or second train, you're not getting a parking space. So in order to increase ridership, to both offset the people that are on the roads, the benefit of good economy is that more people are on the roads, as well as the environmental impacts of people driving solely in their cars from here, back and forth between here and Boston, we want to ensure that in order to get people onto transit, we have the ability for them to be able to get there, however, is the easiest way for them to, to do so. So in addition to that, there was a four hundred million dollar investment into South Station for improvements to the commuter rail. So we're really focusing a lot on the commuter rail that serves people out here as we, again, try to get folks off the road for numerous reasons. As far as the education bill, I don't have a ton to add on top of what Chairman Naughton said, but I do want to caution, and I think we do this every time we come before you, the governor's numbers for this year are the low end of the spectrum traditionally, so it would be my fervent hope that when the House debates our budget, the last week, the last full week of April and the beginning there of May, we're a little bit late this year, that we, our numbers would increase and then traditionally the Senate numbers increase above that and somewhere, we come out usually somewhere in the middle. So the governor's number, while at the thirty minimum aid, is sort of at the low end of the spectrum and I think it's obvious that we have gone, tried to go a long way to increase over that as far as sped circuit breaker and now with the new commitment to regional school transportation. So you have our commitment on that. I also think it's pivotal to point out that a lot of this money is intended to go to lower-end spectrum school systems and folks that desperately need the money, but there will be benchmarks that will need to be met in order for them to obtain that money. And in a lot of instances, there are investments that need to be made by those school districts in order to receive matching money from the state. So it's not just a freebie throwing money at a problem and I think that's really important because we've obviously tried that route before and it doesn't always work. So I, I certainly hear you and I understand the frustration and we want to do what we can to combat Northborough, like Westborough, being a minimum aid community, but it's not just a free-for-all sort of, you know, throwing money into the wind, trying to make it rain kind of situation. So that's really all I have for right now, but if I have anything to add as we move forward, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you very much. Senators?
Okay, sure. So, so thank you, John, for the presentation and of course for getting us these priorities before the meeting. And thank you to the Chair and all the members of the Northborough Board of Selectmen and I, I really just want to praise the House Northborough delegation, Representative Dodd and Representative Gregoire on the, the transportation finance package, because, you know, John, to, to your point that the MMA has been trying to get the Chapter Ninety allocation to three hundred million dollars a year and, and, you know, obviously the challenge is on bonding is until you raise more revenue, it's harder to, to bond more money, to set aside more money. So I think those things are clearly very tied together and I'm, I'm hoping the Senate can take up, you know, a very similar tax package when the Senate debates the transportation finance package and the transportation bond bill. I know I saw, John, I just saw you recently last Friday at the MMA Legislative Breakfast, so I appreciate all that MMA does to just, you know, generally educate legislators about your, your priorities which are reflected here. And I would just add on the, on the student, or excuse me, on, on the education local aid, obviously there, there is a challenge to, to get more education aid to a community like Northborough and the Algonquin High School System being a regional school district. I'm hoping at the very least, the Student Opportunity Act, which, you know, one of the key planks was special education, so I'm hoping that that will provide at least some, you know, meaningful funding to, to the Northborough and, and Northborough-Southborough Regional School District. But I, I am hopeful we can do minimum aid, minimum aid as well in the budget, so that's certainly something I'll be advocating for, so I appreciate you, you highlighting that. And the same for regional school transportation and the special education circuit breaker. So revenues seem fairly stable, I mean, there's always concerns that, you know, revenues month to month are going up or down, but I believe that February was a pretty strong month for the state for revenue, so hoping we can be strong in the budget. And then you had mentioned the climate infrastructure and, and I was at the library for that first meeting for Northborough Town officials to discuss the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, MVP, so that was a great discussion. Congratulate Northborough on getting that, that grant and, and obviously that leads to, you know, hopefully, as you said, the next round to, to get money for real climate infrastructure. You know, the House has passed a, a strong Greenworks Bill that includes climate resiliency. The Senate passed a fairly robust climate change bill and I'm, I'm hoping both of them can become law this session and make sure that, you know, some of that is getting money to every city or town for climate resiliency, whether it's, you know, floods, whether it's drought for, for your farms, whether it's, you know, impacts on those that are more fragile in the community, seniors, people with disabilities, and making sure that as climate change comes upon us, that, you know, there's investments at the local level so you can support which are the good work you're doing. And on the, I think the last thing I would just note on the unfunded mandates, because that comes up a lot before every, you know, Board of Selectmen or a school committee meeting is, you know, the, to, to your point, John, is that that just means the state needs to better fund, you know, all these laws, because otherwise you end up with unfunded mandates. So, you know, for looking at, you know, more mandates around special education or the anti-bullying law which passed many years ago, or, you know, concerns around improved public health or the opioid crisis, just making sure that the state is providing more support so you can carry out the good work you do, whether at the town level or in the school district. So, so I certainly am a strong supporter of providing, you know, more revenue to the cities or towns to carry out the laws that the legislature passes. So, so thanks again for, for the update in your priorities, I really appreciate how well-prepared the, the town is on this and great to be here tonight, thanks.
Thank you very much.
I guess it's my turn. I must also congratulate you, John, and the board. This is the only town I have, including the city of Worcester, that does something as thorough and as, as focused as this. You do, it shows the research that's gone and, and it shows the thinking that has preceded this and it makes it a lot easier for us to respond. We have no excuse for not knowing where you are on any given subject. From the schools to your community, your town agencies, we, we should understand just where you are. I, I, I wanted to talk about the unfunded mandates first, knowing that we have to face you once a year on this unfunded mandates. I think that at least the Senate has become so conscious of not, when we pass, before we pass a piece of legislation, we check to make sure, is this an unfunded mandate? And we have started to, to, to use some self-control on our part about not doing that anymore. And I think you will find that most of our legislation now does not really include unfunded mandates, because you, you've made us very sensitive to this issue and, and that's good. The, the, the education piece that you've talked about initially, I, I sit on both sides of this. I have, I have you and all the other five small, smaller communities that I, I represent, but I also represent two-thirds of Worcester. And the Promise Act really is a promise that was made to these larger cities, the larger cities that have such a huge need and have felt since nineteen ninety-three with the education effort that was done in nineteen ninety-three, that they were short-changed. And in, in a sense, I see the Promise Act as being an opportunity to try to right that wrong. And the issues that you're talking about are issues that we are going to be trying to address as we go forward. This is a big bill, you know it took us two You know it took us two terms to do this bill. It fell apart after the first, in, in the first, uh, in the, in the conference committee in the first term, time we, we did this and we had to wait until the second term. And they, they, that was one of the first things we did, as you know. But it's very, very important that nobody suffer from this. You do better, I mean, that's what, the chairman of the committee on the Senate side, and I think the House side too, kept saying the same thing, and that is, no state, no, no community gets less. But it, it, you know, some, some communities got a lot more and some did not. And I think what I'm hearing tonight is the "some did not" piece. And I understand that. Uh, but I also understand that you, you don't have some of the issues that a big urban school system has to deal with. And you, we look at your school system with envy, truthfully. You've done a beautiful job. I mean, and the shoulders you stand on of the, your predecessors have done a beautiful job and you should be very proud of it. I think this is one of the reasons why Northboro is such a popular town for people to come to. You have a good education, you have a better than good, you have an outstanding educational system. But that is not to sit back and rest on your laurels either. And so keep prodding us because I think that's important. I would say that you, we agree probably, I agree with you on everything you've put here, on, put down here. Uh, we're gonna do, try to do what we can with the special education circuit breaker. When I first ran, and I've been here longer than anybody else, um, that was the biggest issue that, that this, that. He's trying to tell me we came in together.
Classmates.
Classmates. And I guess you were here longer than I, only because I came in with you as, we both came as reps.
When you went as a senator.
And when I came as, became a senator, then we shared Northboro. Your app, oh, I'm sorry. I was impressed what you were trying to do, but anyway. Uh, but special education. But special education has always been a problem. People would move in at the, at the very beginning of the school year and suddenly you found yourself with this huge bill to pay and it, it was disastrous. And so this is a very special piece of it. And we, uh, really, we, we, we are including those transportation costs, uh, but we will keep trying to do better. I mean, that's all we can say. You're awfully close to, people are coming, they come to this town because of proximity. You know that as well as I do. And it, the proximity to, uh, programs that are very specially adapted to children who need that special educational training. Uh, and that's what you're, that's what you're, you've got to, to, to deal with. Uh, we're proud of what we've begun to do with regional transportation reimbursement. We know that's critical for, for, for a town like this and for all the five other towns that I represent. Um, I'd like to talk for a moment about, um, your, transportation's a pretty important subject to me. I've spent a lot of time recently talking and dealing with and working on the RTAs. Um, and I think, John, you've done some remarkable things in terms, you have a hub here, don't you?
Yeah, we're currently, uh, well, we're currently a model that the WRTA is trying to replicate, uh, for senior, particularly right now, senior transportation. So we, we serve as the Oversight Agency through our Senior Center for several area communities and, uh, WRTA, WRTA reimburses us for that, uh, not nearly enough. That's the theme. But, um, but it's a good partnership and it's been a very good program. We believe that our residents and the area residents have benefited from that. Um, but we are in negotiations for a, a new contract with them. One of the things that we do need is, uh, we're a bargain compared to what they used to spend, uh, how much you spend for a similar service. So it's really been, it's been a, a win.
It's a win-win.
All around. Little bit of rebalancing that needs to occur there, but, but we do, uh, we run multiple vans out of our Senior Center that service, uh, all the area, several area communities. And it's, um, we've been doing this for eight years and the WRTA now has said, this is the model that they want to replicate elsewhere in, in the region.
And that really is your town administrator's brainchild. Uh, we really didn't have much to do with it except to support it. And it, it works. It really works. As we start to look at each of our communities now, we probably, probably even greater than the western part of the state, have a real transportation problem of getting from one community to another community. If you don't have a car, how do you get from here to there? Uh, it, it, it's a very serious issue and it's, really keeps us from becoming the great Commonwealth that we can be. It also has, ties into affordable housing and the issues that, that are attached to that. Uh, you need to have affordable housing where you have, where you have transportation. Without it, it just doesn't work. And so that more and more is something that we are all concerned about. The RTAs, I spent a lot of time the year before last, uh, working on setting some standards, setting some funding standards for the RTAs. Uh, they have to be sustainable and they have to be able to plan from one year to the next where they are and what they're doing. And that, we, we reached that point. We now have a minimum level and that hopefully will make a huge change. Uh, we're, we're missing tying it to, uh, the Consumer Price Index. I hope we can do that in, in our transportation bill. Uh, we have yet to do our transportation bill, but that is a very important piece to it, from my perspective. Agricultural composting, uh, which I've been dealt with for too long, as far as I'm concerned. But this is almost, you are almost the poster child for the need for this bill. You are just about the poster child. We, we, we thought we, we thought we would get the, the involvement of the municipality into the bill and we lost it in the last, in, in, in the last session. Uh, it, the bill is, has now been given an extension, it's in an extension order. And I think we should do everything we can to move that bill forward. Uh, we almost were there last year. Why not? Why not? Um, I, I think our problems are compounded, it's a complex subject, it really is. Shouldn't be this complex, but it's become that complex and I, I can't help but, uh, look at select person. Hirsch, when I say this, because she is personally involved in this issue and has been for some time. Uh, we can't have other communities going, having to go through this. We have to put some, some, some standards down and it has to be done soon. Um, I think I'd like to stop and let you ask us questions.
I was gonna lead right into my colleague.
I was just gonna ask Superintendent Martinow to, yeah.
Can I just kinda, let me set it up for you, if I may, please? Because we, just, on the subject of state aid and in particular, um, the Student Opportunity Act and those promises, you, you had mentioned, Senator Chandler, about the promises made to the cities. Um, I just want to remind everybody, uh, special education circuit breaker has been underfunded, under, underfunded in what's required by the law. Regional transportation, which we bought into, that's one of the reasons why you form a regional school system, because the transportation was supposed to be reimbursed, that's been underfunded. Charter school reimbursement, also underfunded. So when we look at the Student Opportunity Act, my concern and the concern, and, and I'm sure Superintendent Martinow will have more, uh, comments on this, is we're looking at the Student Opportunity Act at one point four billion dollars to implement over its timeframe. The existing promises hasn't been met and now we've made a one point four billion dollar promise in addition to that. Our concern is that, and we hope, we hope that our delegation is focused on these previously existing promises and getting us to, at least to the level that, that you agreed we should be at. Um, yeah, realizing that we're not gonna be a big beneficiary of the, of the Student Opportunity Act, that it's gonna go to needier communities, but, but these pre-existing, um, promises have been underfunded chronically and they do matter to us and it's, it's one of the rare places where we would see some, some help, so.
So, first of all, on behalf of the district and the school committees in Northboro, Northboro-Southboro Regional School District, thank you for all of your advocacy on education around the Student Opportunity Act. I think it is a, uh, one, uh, huge win in terms of education across the Commonwealth. Um, they hire me to be the superintendent of Northboro. Um, so obviously we're going to advocate for every dollar for Northboro. I think, um, the minimum aid is something that we are interested in looking at more closely. A hundred and thirty dollars is something that, you know, we're excited to hear that that might increase as the budget process unfolds. And one of the wins, I think, of Student Opportunity Act is getting, um, special education transportation reimbursement as part of circuit breaker and that's, that's significant. So we will see additional dollars in that area, which we are grateful for. So part of our advocacy is to accelerate that funding. So I know there is a, a plan, but the more, faster we can accelerate, faster we'll see more dollars in that area. Special education, uh, transportation, um, is more than our regular education transportation costs, so, um, that is a help. Uh, regional transportation is always an area where, um, I think the funding levels have increased over the past several years, so we're appreciative of that. But again, we want, we want to maximize, uh, funding for regional transportation because the communities of, um, Northboro and Southboro do benefit from, from that, those dollars. And lastly, um, part of the Student Opportunity Act that I think we will benefit from is the increased capacity of MSBA, have to do some building projects. So looking at accelerated repair and looking at the capital plan for Northboro for the next three to five to ten years. Um, I think that, that could be very beneficial to, um, the community of Northboro. Um, but again, I think that the minimum aid, um, is something that we would like to see increased. Um, maximizing, um, transportation and circuit breakers is a significant, um, issue for the town of Northboro.
Are you applying for school building assistance?
So we, um, we are not this year. Um, we do have a capital plan that, um, you know, with the great work of the town and John, um, looks at windows and boilers and roofs and long-term building projects. And we do anticipate getting into the queue and submitting statements of interest to move forward.
I, I really suggest that you do that sooner rather than later because you, it takes a while to get into the queue and it takes a while to move up. And, uh, I, it should be something that you're all in agreement with. This, this is where the, the replacements need to be made and, uh, I would, have you had gotten any money from them at all? I don't, I don't remember.
We, we just recently, uh, recently, last couple of years, we wrapped up the Lincoln Street Elementary School Building Project. So that was a twenty-five and a half million dollar project. Our MSBA grant was ten point four million dollars. Uh, we finished that project, uh, uh, on time and I think we returned over a million dollars back to the state because we, we finished that project significantly under budget. And we were sort of told, well, you kinda gotta get back, but you're sort of at the back of the line, uh, because you just got a ten point four million dollar grant. Uh, one of the things the superintendent and I have been working on is looking at, uh, the opportunity to get some smaller grants. Uh, we have some roof projects coming up. Uh, we make regular investments in terms of boilers and roofs and things like that. So we do have a, a roof project coming up in one of our schools that we're, we're looking at doing. But we also can't do a twenty-five and a half million dollar project, even with the state's help, you know, every three years. So we're spacing those out, it's one of the things that we're talking about. But I think, um, we'll probably be back in the queue for some, uh, some roof projects and some smaller projects and then a larger, uh, renovation addition project out a couple of years.
Because if you bring the, um, the executive of, of, of the agency out here and perhaps give him a tour of where those, that, those dollars might be best spent in Northboro, he'll become more familiar with you and be able to remember, oh, I remember seeing that. Uh, and we're talking about windows, we're talking about roofs, we're talking about boilers. But they, you know, these are, these are smaller dollars, but they amount, they mount up.
Absolutely.
So, um, you want to keep your schools in as pristine condition as you can.
I just have two quick points new to the discussion on what you just raised. Um, the Student Opportunity Act, while attempting to address the charter school reimbursement formula in a way that is beneficial to sending communities, in my opinion, did not do a significant job of that. And we also didn't do a significant job dealing with the private special education costs, which is largely related to the Chapter seven six six schools. So it is my hope that now that we have dealt with this large chunk that took us two sessions to get through this generational piece of educational law, that we can now go back and take a look at some of the things that are also causing severe challenges to the towns like Northboro and again, like Westboro, that have kind of been pushed to the side in order to move forward with this significant widespread law. And the Chapter seven six six schools and the charter school reimbursement formula would be at the top two of my priority list as far as that goes.
Greatly appreciate that refocus, very much so.
Just two co, two last comments. Um, the civics bill and that work has made a positive impact in terms of the work in our schools.
I'm so glad to hear that.
That's great.
And the other initiative that we're studying and trying to move forward as a community is start time. Our high school students, um, start school at seven twenty. Um, the research talks about, um, the amount of students, sleep students need. Um, we have students waiting for buses at six twenty in the morning.
Oh, my God, that's gross.
We are, uh, I know there is an act to study, um, start time. Um, so anything that you can do to advocate for statewide effort, um, to look at that more deeply and have a statewide solution, uh, would create the, I mean.
Your special, one of the, the last thing in the civics education bill is of special projects. This might be an interesting special project for some of your students to become involved. It touches them.
Thank you very much, Greg. Uh, members of the board, any questions or comments? Leslie?
I have a couple of questions. Okay. First of all, thank you very much for being here, each of you. I know you're very busy and it's great to see all four of you here to take the time to talk to us every year at this time. Um, a couple of things. Harry, you'd mentioned about the extension for the agricultural composting bill. What, is there something we should be doing at this point? Is there more that we can do to get that moving forward?
I wish I could say that I could give you a magic formula, but I think we did it all last year, last, in the last session.
Yeah.
And I think it was, it was just snatched away from us at the last moment because the regulations, the new, the newer regulations had just come out. And it was the governor's, Governor's Agricultural Secretary, Commissioner, who felt that it was, we should at least give those, those regs a, a chance to be, to see if it worked. Well, they've had a chance and I don't think it's made much difference to you. I mean, you live with it.
Right.
So I, I, I don't think it's made much difference and I think we have to keep, until, until this is done, uh, you have to be resilient about this and you have to keep going after it.
Is there anything more vocal that we can be?
I would like to see, I, I think the Select Board's, uh, you, you, you did a statement last time.
Yes.
And I think that was very impressive.
Yes.
Uh, I think you should do it again.
You could do it again. Okay, that's kind of what I was getting.
But distinguish.
Okay.
I mean, the bill got all the way last time.
Yes.
Till the very end.
And it was smashed away.
Governor Baker vetoed, yeah.
Yes.
So distinguish, two years ago from now, the, the regs that were implemented, uh, by DAR and that.
Additional big dollars that have gone into reimbursing.
Well, that, that's the litigation piece.
Yeah, but I mean, it's still.
It, well, we're talking about two, two projects here. Um, and just distinguish that nothing's changed and, and point that out. So, so the request to see how, if the implementation of the regulations was gonna make a change, it hasn't. And you're tip of the spear on that in both neighborhoods, you know, Coolidge and, uh, Paul Hill.
If I may, I just want to comment. So the regulations we provided, the board, the board provided a very good extensive written testimony on the complete inadequacy of the window dressing. And that's not too strong of a statement that DAR tried to put on this. They did nothing to fundamentally change any of the issues or concerns, which frankly was why we worked with Senator Chandler's office and the rest of the delegation to bring this legislation forward again. And it's amazing, the legislation the last cycle through, we got through the, the House, the Senate Conference Committee and was vetoed by the governor. And I, as I've said, I, I like to think he didn't have good information, uh, when he did that. But this window dressing approach, we're very clear and we're on record. We have written documents and statements, if anybody's interested, to see exactly why those regulations not only didn't help, but in some ways actually made things worse. So legislations, it needed now just, uh, more than ever before. And so, you know, we're, we're pressing, we've done everything we can. But if at any point in time you think we should be doing something or there's a, a milestone that requires action or advocacy on our behalf, please let me know, cause... that requires action or advocacy on our behalf, please let me know because, you know, I'm happy to drive in and I know the board's happy to come into Boston and meet with whomever you think might be helpful.
You've been wonderful. You just were incredible in terms of your support of this. But as I say, it was snatched away from us at the 11th hour. But there is no reason why it should not pass this time because, as you've said, the regulations have not proven a safeguard at all.
And I do want to just mention at the hearing in Boston, both Representative Naughton and Representative Gregoire came and provided testimony and support of our legislation. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Leslie?
Okay. Also, the municipal vulnerability preparedness process, we did complete that and obviously we're going to go try for grants and so forth. Do you foresee any problems with that? Will we have to wait a couple of years? Is there money that's kind of set aside for that so that if we provide a good enough case with what our highest priorities are, that we will be able to get grant funding?
I mean, it's been a budget priority for the governor and, you know, I think the administration, EEA, has been pretty clear that, you know, for communities that went through the process to get that grant, to have the sort of gathering, the community meeting around MVP, that they would then be eligible and highly likely to get that second round of funding. So.
Okay.
Confident.
Okay, that's great. Another question, I know we're not talking about OPEB right now, it sounds like it's not on the plate anywhere, but it's such a huge amount of money. It's an insane amount of money that we're putting into that every year. This is not just going to drop off the edge of the table, is it? I mean, is there something that maybe next year's cycle that somehow this can be addressed? And I'm also assuming that there are some communities who are not as fastidious about the way that they're approaching this. I don't know what other word to really use. And I just don't want Northborough to get penalized in some way because we are doing a good job with it versus another community who either can't do it, doesn't want to do it, hasn't budgeted well, whatever it happens to be. So I just don't know, you know, what the status is of that and whether it will be discussed at some point next year, maybe?
I would just say, I think the legislature's, you know, we passed a number of major bills. I think we're going to take on a few more major bills. So, you know, once we get those passed into law, I would, you know, hope that would open up the opportunity to have the discussion on OPEB for next session. Yeah, but I think it'd be difficult for this year.
Okay. That's great, thank you. And Senator Chandler, one last comment about the civics. I think it's great that you did that, that you were behind that. Did it start this year, Greg?
We had a great things involved and.
Okay. Okay. I think it's fantastic. I know all my kids were excited about it. Unfortunately, it's too late for them to have had it at the high school, but I think it's very exciting. Did you hear any negative feedback about doing it or was everybody pretty much excited?
It took us seven years to do it. So it really took, it took a lot of things coming together and I think they happened to come. It was bipartisan, it was bicameral, and I think it serves the purposes we hoped it would serve. We worked with superintendents, with the school committees, with principals, we worked with everyone. And I think, hopefully, it will give us a new generation of young leaders who, you know, it's quite wonderful. And I should tell you that I'm also a lead sponsor on the Empower Bill. That's the bill that will have 16 and 17-year-olds able to vote in municipal elections at the decision of your town. It's a local option and it was just promoted, endorsed, I should say, by the Boston Globe. So we are really happy to see that because municipal elections are very, they're very close to children and, you know, school committees work, the schoolwork, the time, what time you get up in the morning to go to school, that's all part of something that they care about. And you don't have to opt into it, but for those communities that do opt in, I mean, we're saying that you can sign up and register to vote, but not be able really to be eligible to vote until you're 18 now. But they take it at 16, all of our clerks are taking it at 16. And, you know, after they've had a civics course, and we hope it goes through the schools generally, we hope that this is the way of showing whether it works or not. I mean, you know, we were getting terrible numbers in terms of people voting in local elections, in municipal elections. It wouldn't be a bad idea, maybe the children will lead the way and get their parents to vote as well. That would be a good idea, we think.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
Thanks. Thank you all for coming. It's great to see you. I very much appreciate you taking the time to come out and see us. As John mentioned, one of the challenges that we have as a community is the annual increase of just 1.1% of our state aid come in to the town. And because of that, you know, we need to look at our local tax structure and our tax rates and raise taxes or adjust taxes appropriately depending on what we're getting in for state aid. I've done a lot of reading, can't find a lot of solid information. The state has gotten some impressive new tax revenues coming in from the casinos and legalized marijuana. And I was just wondering if any of those new revenue streams for the state directly impact or in a positive way the town of Northborough or indirectly impact the town of Northborough?
I don't believe they have yet, have they?
Well, I think those revenue sources go to the general fund.
Right.
So then let, you know, legislature decide. So that'll obviously help get to an increase in unrestricted local aid. That's what the hope is.
Growers or providers?
Yeah.
The cities that, on the marijuana, the cities that you see, cities and towns that you see benefiting from her, ones where they're being placed, either the grow facilities or the for-sale facilities, and then they can add the, well, the law says 3% over and above on the sales. A lot of towns are working, pardon the term, some drug deals on the side there to enhance that, what they get in mitigation monies. And so, again, I'm not proposing you go out and try to recruit those facilities, though I know one town administrator who actually knows you, who's in, who I'm in the army with, who's actually proactively trying to find some facilities to come to his town. But, you know, that's kind of a policy thing. Overall, Tim, you know, what I would say about these new revenues coming in, none of the casinos have hit, neither of the casinos have hit what they thought they were going to. And I, I, well, that does not surprise me one bit. I think the market's saturated. That being, but what's going in, we have done a good job building up the rainy day fund and I think that's a good thing.
But that's not from the monies from?
But it, extensively, yeah, sure it is, sure it is. That being said, let's just look at the events of today because we're people out there talking about, let's tap that, let's tap that. The Dow dropped 2,000 points today. Financial services is still, depending on how you count it, the second or third biggest industry in Massachusetts. So the great months we've been having, will they continue? We'll see. Things beyond our control, that's, you know, prepare to, prepare to be flexible. So the revenues, yes, they've been good, not what we thought they would be. The marijuana hasn't been really what we thought it would be either. But it's, let's be prepared for the future. Who would have thought the last few weeks would have turned out the way they have? I think we're, we've done a good job being prepared for the future, both on our public health side and on our financial side.
And to the chairman's point, our rainy day fund is higher than it's ever been with the latest deposit that we did as a result of a supplemental budget earlier this calendar year.
Yeah, understood.
Which will pay off with the bond ratings that we get from Wall Street.
We talked about transportation and all these other things and.
No, we hear you.
It's all underfunded and this new money's coming in, is any of that's going to be allocated?
I think it's yet to be seen. I think we have to give it a little more time to shake out is what seems to be the consensus up here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Julian?
Well, thank you very much for coming. Thank you for all that you do during the course of the year. And as we talked about, the Empower Act bill and the civics project, I have to tell you a sweet story that in February, we received a lovely Valentine's Day card from the Peaslee School, fifth graders at the Peaslee School, who are studying local government and they had some very good questions for us. So I think with all of these things happening, we'll see a good future.
That's very nice to hear.
Excellent. Excellent.
And I'll just finish by also saying I'm very encouraged by the notion of the required civics as part of the educational framework or whatever. I think that's really a valuable thing and certainly instilling some of that understanding and knowledge at that age certainly makes a difference. I think many of us, I'm sure mostly learned it as adults on the way here and not so much in the way of formal education in a lot of cases. So I think that's a very encouraging and important point to make. I'm just going to help out my DPW director here by circling back to the Chapter 90 funding for a moment. I just wanted to say that I just want to congratulate the town staff for the excellent work they did back like at least six or seven years ago in undertaking this study to understand what the conditions were for roadways, not only the roadways, but also our bridges and culverts around town. And with that understanding, with that analysis, we just have a very, very clear idea of exactly where we are, where we want to be and the amount of dollars it's going to take to get us there. So particularly the additional funding is going to make a big difference to us. And to the extent that you could put in place something that's a multi-year funding plan, which just gives us a little bit better opportunity, as you know, it's a short paving and roadwork season. The later into the, into the year that we get the numbers finalized and can get started on that, it just shortens, compresses the amount of time and the amount of work that can be done. So having some confidence year over year about what that funding is going to be allows us to plan better and undertake more of that work. So anything you can do along that line, much appreciated. And as always, the educational support, we were very grateful for all the effort you've put into that and just would like to continue to sustain the educational level we've tried to establish here in our town, understanding there are demands from various quarters across the Commonwealth and needs that have to be addressed. We would just like to try to be able to keep a firm foothold and continue to offer the educational excellence that we've offered up to this point. So.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your being here.
Thank you so much.
Jason, you know, in all the conversations I have with the various, the speaker, the chair, Ways and Means, and all the various stakeholders that affect this area of the Commonwealth, I also, I always try to hold up, I don't always try to, I always hold up, Northborough is a pinnacle and is an example of well-run communities, but communities with tremendous quality of life that's created by the people that help run the town. So thank you for your work. I'm going to be incredibly self-serving here for a minute, but it works. It sure works. I was honored to be chosen as the grand marshal of the Worcester County St. Patrick's Parade this coming Sunday, if it, if it goes off with everything going on. That being said, my office is trying to use it as an opportunity to highlight all the wonderful things of the towns that I represent, Northborough, Clinton, Sterling, Berlin, Boylston, Lancaster. So we've invited anyone from the communities that would like to march at the front of the parade with us. We have some schoolchildren marching with us. We have the Clinton High Galloping Gale Band leading the way. But if anyone would like to join us at the front of the parade Sunday in Worcester, please contact my office, we're putting that out. But we'd love to highlight the great things of the towns I represent and especially the town of Northborough, the schools, the schoolchildren, and anyone else that would like to participate. So whatever success I've had over the years is due to the people I've been honored to be able to represent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Greg.
Elbow chips. It's now past the hour of 7:25 PM. We have a hearing to consider an application for a change of manager submitted by Aurelio Meto of Costa Diva Inc. for the all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for premises located at 35 Solomon Pond Road. Aurelio?
Good evening.
Can you, can you just explain or discuss the transition that's taking place here?
So just due to personal, basically, Diana, she has to go taking care of her own stuff. So it's just a matter of changing hands, basically.
Just a routine transfer. Yep. We have information that's been reviewed by Detective Sergeant Brian Griffin, who's indicated he has no concerns about this transfer. Any questions by the board? Leslie?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much for doing business in Northborough. There's a nice Facebook page that you all have and shows some wonderful, wonderful food being served there.
Thank you.
Looks very delicious.
Have you been there yet?
Yes, I have. It is very delicious.
Thanks, thanks.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
Well, we're, we're going to turn two years this summer, so.
Two, okay, wow. That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Good to be here.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the application as submitted by Costa Diva Incorporated to change the manager of record for the all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for premises located at 35 Solomon Pond Road from Diana Galant to Aurelio Meto.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting.
It's now past the hour of 7:30. We have a public hearing to consider petition number 28013385 is submitted by Massachusetts Electric Company in Verizon, New England, for a new pole on Crawford Street, an underground conduit along Franklin Circle. Do we have someone from Verizon? National Grid, sure. Can you come up, please? Yep. And if you could please state your name for our records here. Albert Galvin, engineer, National Grid, Hoptown. Great, thank you. And this is just a pole or conduit installation along Franklin Circle?
Correct.
Could you just describe the elements of the project?
Sure, yeah. These older URDs, a lot of times they have direct buried cable, which can eventually break down due to the elements and lead to faults or outages for the residents there. So we have an initiative that as we come along these particular underground developments, we upgrade them to new wire, all encased in conduit, so it'll last many more years. Probably, chance are we'll never have to come out and worry about it until years and years later. And they also situated with pole boxes and things like that to have easier access to it. It's a much cleaner, easier way to maintain the stability of the power in that development.
Okay, very good. We have Scott Sharpton here, DPW director, and Fred Littfield, town engineer. Do you gentlemen have any?
It's a very similar project that's been done in other areas of the community. Kristen Drive off of School Street had that area, direct burial cable. They went in and put in conduit, pole boxes, hand holes, and I think it was even a new riser and drop at the existing pole. Indian Meadow was a very similar circumstance there as well. Again, you know, direct burial cable under the ground gets damaged over time from the elements and conductors in conduit is the standard now. So we did look at the drawings, it includes, it includes a new riser at the southern limit of the Franklin Circle, which is close to West Main Street. New riser goes up the pole, well, actually comes down the pole and runs underground along the right side of the road as you go around the loop from that direction. There'll be a series of electrical manholes and pole boxes. It looks like the majority of the work remains on that side of the road with a few crossings. The crossings would go over to electrical manholes, correct me if I'm misintelling any of the line.
No, that's correct. There are some transformers and such on the opposite sides and they'll cross straight to them. Other than that, it stays to the right side for most of it.
So the requirements for the work after the hearing is that National Grid finalize the design, submits it to the Department of Public Works for review. We do a site visit and prepare conditions for that permit issuance. As part of that site visit, there could be a public meeting on the road, there could be a public meeting in advance at Town Hall to discuss it with the residents. Some of the things we look at specifically in the field after the design is advanced and before it goes forward is cuts across driveway aprons, large wooded veg- of an old red maple tree in somebody's front yard, how the roadway condition is gonna be left, at what time thereafter are they gonna come back and do final repairs to the roadway. So all that stuff is conditioned as part of the road opening permit through the Department of Public Works. Often on a project like this, a requirement would be a pre-construction video inspection, just somebody goes down the road with their camera on video. And so everybody sees the conditions of the driveways, the mailboxes, the lawn, and the curbing, and the trees. I'm the tree warden as well, so when we do the walk-through, if the design layout can be adjusted to save a tree, that's great. If the specific, if special excavation requirements are there, vacuum excavation to save the roots or structure, that can be something discussed and issued as part of the permit, so.
Okay. I was gonna say, I think the thing that occurred to me was whatever inconvenience there is to the residents and whatever disturbance there is to their property in terms of, as you said, driveways or adjacencies to the road or whatever.
Yeah, I actually reached out this morning with the civil manager, and he'll work with the DigSafe folks on if they can even trench in the gutter lining on the opposite, on the street side of the curb. If they can, they'll stay off the sidewalk altogether, so it won't affect the driveways at all. And they'll just repave whatever they have to take up. So if that's a possibility, of course, they'll have to walk it out and see what's there. But once they do their pre-checks, that's something they've done before.
We did that process at Wells Farm.
Okay, yeah. Do you have a sense of the timeline for this work to start and be completed?
Well, not exactly, because this, this piece here is kinda holding things up. So once the, once the approval for the pole install at the corner, the riser pole, once that gets processed, it kinda takes it to the next step. And then they do their pre-checks, meet out with DigSafe. So it's, it's all kind of a, you know, dwindle-down effect. But at the next meeting, the civil engineer actually said he would, he'd be more than willing to attend that meeting.
Sure.
And go over the particulars of the trench work and how long it might take during the particular days. They'll probably break it up, you know, so many feet per day, things like that.
And there was similar work done, I do recall, the project for in Indian Meadow or whatever. And that's complete now?
Yes.
And on the whole, were there any concerns or issues?
A few concerns were brought up on conduit routing that would change during construction. That happens often. I wanna do a better job vetting that out with vegetation in mind this time around. It was mostly vegetation-related.
Largely, the residents who are affected by it are satisfied.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns by the board? Leslie?
Just a quick question. You said it should last many, many years. Are we talking, are we talking 20 years, 30 years? How long is?
Well, I mean, there's no guarantee of a particular year, but I mean, if, if the direct burial is lasting us, say, 15 to 20, that's more, at least double it, I would say.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's protected from all the elements. There's no chance of, you know, water getting in there, cracking the line, then, you know, winter expands that crack and over time.
Frost season and all that, yeah.
More seeps in. You can get a fault. Plus, it's easier, if a fault does occur at some point, it's easier to get at it and fix it and just patch it up. It's a, it's a much cleaner process and quicker to fix.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? This is a public hearing. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Yes, sir. Can you state your name and address, please?
I'm Glenn Campbell, and I live at 25 Franklin Circle. And I'd like to make everyone aware that we residents along 25 Franklin Circle are already experiencing failures of the direct burial cables, both from National Grid and our private ownership of the cables. And we're incurring quite an expense on this. So I think I can speak for all of our neighbors that we are heartily in favor of National Grid coming in and doing their part of the wire maintenance.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hold on, look at 35 Franklin Circle. I guess I'm trying to understand a little bit better. When you run the conduit under, it looks like to be the opposite side of my home. How are you going to connect to my power box?
Well, the distribution box. Right. Some of the transformers are on the opposite side, so we're cut over at that point. And whichever houses are tied into that transformer have an underground secondary line to that. So depending on where you're situated.
Will that power be disrupted at any time?
If it, if it does have to be at that time, you're talking not, you know, within an hour. They'll just have to make some connections, and everyone will be notified ahead of time. So, yeah, they minimize the disruption as much as possible.
Now, when this is done, will they be repaving the road?
Yes.
Part of the road opening permit conditions will include restoration of the roadway. If the work is in fact gonna proceed as they're saying, along a gutter line, there would be a milled section beyond the limits of the trench throughout the longitudinal excavation. And then traverse trenches would be milled and overlaid as well. We let the trenches settle for a season or six months, and then come back and mill them and overlay them.
But it's not a full pavement, the whole road?
No, the entire width of the roadway will not be paved.
It'd just be repair of the disturbed portions of the pavement.
You trench out about this much, you pave it with a patch, the trench does what it has to do for settlement. You come back and then you mill out this much, and you pave it all. So you have a little bit of an overlap beyond the trench.
Sir, do you have another question?
He answered one of them, but a follow-on question to that was expressed by one of my neighbors who isn't here tonight. And the question was whether these, the poles, are they exist, are they replacement of existing poles, or is this a whole new pole that's being put in?
It's be a new pole, put in at the corner.
In a different location?
Crawford.
Or in the same location?
Different location. This is an intermediate pole for the two that are there now. Right now, the direct burial runs further down Crawford, so to minimize costs and eating up this, you know, chewing up the street and all that. They put this intermediate pole at the corner of Crawford.
Any other public comments? Any further information any of you general might have that might be relevant for our consideration? Nothing, okay. Consider the public hearing to be closed. Any, well, let me have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve and execute petition number 28013385 as submitted by Massachusetts Electric and Grid Company and Verizon New England Incorporated for a new pole on Crawford Street and underground conduit along Franklin Circle.
Second? Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now past the hour of 7:35 PM. We have a public hearing to consider placing an article on the annual town meeting warrant that would change the start and end time of annual town meeting from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM, to 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. This is a suggestion that was raised by Sletton and Kevin. You recall at last year's town meeting, there was a warrant article that was passed to move the start time back from 7:30 to 7:00 PM in order to try to get an earlier start, make it a little more accommodating to people. There was no change made to the end time, which is still 11:00 PM. But in consideration that we had earlier in the fall about what changes might be made to town, town meeting day or days and times, this board kind of arrived at a consensus, I believe, that perhaps moving the time a little bit earlier and determining a little earlier end time for each evening would be the most appropriate way to try and accommodate the concerns that we've heard in terms of lateness of the hour, people's babysitting, things like that. So Sletton and Kevin, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, like I, like I said at a previous meeting regarding this issue, I've heard feedback from, from a number of people, mostly around childcare, that it's difficult to get childcare on that particular night of the evening because it is a school night, and a lot of the high school kids that babysit can't babysit until 11:30, you know, 11, 11:30 at night on a school night. So it's difficult for people to get childcare on that night of the week. So hopefully, moving it from 7:00 to 11:00, moving it to 6:00 to 10:00 will alleviate at least some of those concerns, make it a little bit easier for, for parents to find childcare. 10 o'clock, I think, is a little bit more reasonable for babysitters to be out during the week. So that was really the, and in addition, since I've, I've brought this up, I've also heard from other people that just having it end at 10 o'clock will make going to work the next day a little bit easier, too. So, so that was the basis for, for bringing this issue up with the board.
Thank you very much. Comments, Leslie?
Yeah, I have heard the same things that Tim has said. Over the years, people have always talked about childcare and how best to work it. I also, in addition to that, feel like we should try it. I think we're, we need to try what we can to see if we can attract people to get there. I think there are always gonna be potentially quorum issues, waiting for people to come in. If we're looking for 100, you know, do we need to sit and wait five, 10 minutes, you know? I think there are so many different things to think about here that I, I think it's definitely worth giving a try and taking a look to see if this does attract people. With them realizing that it's not gonna be a late night, I think there may be a potential impact on people who commute to Boston, maybe. They could just come late if they needed to. They may not be able to get there for 6 o'clock, but I don't think it's a good enough reason not to try this to see if we can get as many people as we can to town meeting, make it more attractive for them to be there. And as Tim said, easier to get a babysitter. Who knows, they're not gonna be committed to as late, so.
Thank you, Leslie. Julian?
Yes, so we've had a few months to think about it. It was first brought up in September. And I wanna go on record to say that I think it's always a great idea to try, to try to get as many people to town meeting as possible. But with this particular warrant, I'm wondering if we could slow it down a little bit and try to get a little more information, maybe doing a survey. We could do an online survey, a survey at town meeting. We're just trying 7 o'clock this year, and it, it will be interesting to see how that works. That will give us some information. And, you know, there's, there's talk in all towns about this, because we're always trying to get people to town meeting. And I know that some people are switching over to Saturday. So I don't think it'd be the worst idea to also, you know, and get some more information about a Saturday town meeting. And one of the things that is always a difficult issue is when, when to stop. At 11 o'clock, I guess we can, we can take a vote whether to continue or not. Would it help, and I'd like more discussion about this, about doing a hard stop at 10 or 11 or whatever it is. So for me, I, I'd like to hear more from, from the citizens, and I'd like to do a little more research, if we could.
Okay, thank you. This is the public hearing to get some more research and input from the public. So just to express my own opinion, I'm, I'm the type who's going to show up whenever it starts, and I'm gonna be the type who's gonna stay until it finally ends. I was doing that before I was ever sitting on any town board or committee, so that's just me. That said, that's just me. So I can understand the concerns people might have for, particularly for lateness of the hour, and how that impacts just the workweek, how it impacts babysitting. I certainly, certainly would like to try, or willing to try, moving back to a 6 o'clock start time. It's, it's one of those things where, once again, it's, it's a couple nights out of the year. It should be something that people should be aware of and can plan for in advance. An earlier time, yes, there may be some issue with some people who are adjusting their commuting schedules home at night or something. We'll just have to see if there's a mitigating impact, I think, for, for, in whatever way this might benefit people. I take your point about the end time. I think there might be some merit in, in, in giving people some assurance that despite the 10 o'clock scheduled end time, we have this provision in, in the bylaw, I believe, that permits the assembled body to vote and decide whether they continue beyond the scheduled ending time.
Yes.
Is there anything you can add to that?
Yeah, my, just, a hard stop would be difficult because you may find yourself down to one or two articles that you can wrap up in 10 or 15 minutes, and you will not get a quorum the next day for those articles, which has happened to us in the past, where we, we got to the end and we had an article left. And in fact, it was, I believe it was a citizens petition, if I'm not mistaken. And the next night, we all stood around for an hour and a half trying to get a quorum, and you just didn't get it. So you run the risk of not being able to complete your work. And so a hard stop on the surface makes sense. That would be, I would just, I would be, I would caution against that for that reason, that you, you might need five more minutes for one or two articles, and, and you're not gonna get that quorum, you know, the next day. Which is one of the reasons why if things did shift back, it's a little bit more reasonable. If you extend to get that one or two article done at 11 o'clock, you may find yourself, you know, pushing into some very difficult hours for a number of people. So that would just be the caveat there.
I think it's, we can observe that we're not changing the duration of town meeting here. We're just sliding it back an hour, essentially. So from the current 7 o'clock start time to 11:00, it's four hours. We're, we're still allowing four hours. And if, as you say, John, if there's just one or two articles left at the end that we, you know, can dispose of in 15 minutes or half an hour beyond the 10 o'clock time, I think that's a reasonable accommodation. If it's the case that we have half a dozen articles or more, it's gonna roll to a second night anyway, in all likelihood. So it's, it's more the consideration when you're right near the end of the warrant article or warrant, you don't want to essentially abandon those last few articles. So, but I, I do agree with you. I think we want to try to curb that a little bit, since the intent of this is to provide an earlier starting time and an earlier stopping time in order to make it more accommodating to people. So, yeah, Tim?
I'd just like to point out that when I was bringing this up, at no point was I in favor of a hard stop at 10. That wasn't part of the discussion at all. Like, that wasn't, I know in the, the town meeting that if we run into the stop time, there is a vote for the body that if we want to continue or not. We had it last year, you know, it happens. So it, it, the intention for the 10 o'clock suggested stop time wasn't for a hard stop. And I, I'd also like to point out, too, that, that we had this initial discussion in, in September. It's now March, six months later, and I was hoping that during that six-month period, us collectively as a board would go and talk to people and get their feedback. So then when we came and had this discussion, that you would have spoken to people, the members of this board would have spoken to people, to get your own feedback, to conduct your own survey, to get that information from people instead of, you know, not taking advantage of that time. That's all.
Leslie?
Yeah, well, first of all, no one is making unilateral decisions at town meeting. Everything gets voted on. If we're going to extend it so that we can complete the discussion of an article, we get to vote on it, whether we feel like doing that. If anyone has to leave, they can leave. No one is forcing anyone to stay there. If there's a babysitting issue, then they can leave. I also think that a wonderful place to, to conduct a survey of this is a town meeting by voting on the article. You get to see how people feel about it right then and there. The people who are actively involved in this community show up at town meeting, for the most part, if they can. So if it's an article, we can vote on it. And if people think it's a bad idea, they can get up and talk about it and say, hey, look at, you know, 6 o'clock's too early, this is rotten, and not vote for it. But that's a great place, I think, actually, to take the pulse on this particular concept. So I would be in favor of, of this as a, as a warrant article. So without a hard stop and the ability to vote on it like we do everything else.
Yep. Julian?
So, so I, I would like to reiterate that my comment was that I'd like to slow the process down a little bit and have, have some research. And yes, I have been talking to some of my friends, and they are, are surprised at a 6 o'clock start. I, you know, for, for a lot of people, it's the getting home from work and getting the children settled and, and, you know, nothing is ever going to be perfect, which is why I think doing, doing an online survey and, and a survey when people come to town meeting might, might be, you know, a more comprehensive way of doing this.
So, so I, I would like to reiterate that my comment was that I'd like to slow the process down a little bit and have, have some research. And yes, I have been talking to some of my friends, and they are, are surprised at a six o'clock start. I, you know, for, for a lot of people, it's the getting home from work and getting the children settled, and, and even, you know, nothing is ever going to be perfect, which is why I think doing, doing an online survey and, and a survey when people come to town meeting might, might be, you know, a more comprehensive way of doing this. In addition to the fact, we are twenty-five percent seniors, and whatever time we do it in the evening is, is, is difficult. Some people don't like to drive at night, and that's why I don't think it wouldn't be the worst thing to, to discuss Saturday as an option and see what people think. I'm, I'm, I'm going to show up whatever, so that's where I stand on that.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or discussion by the board? This is a public hearing. Mr. Scolanti?
My name is Henry Scolanti, seventy-two Crestwood Drive. I just want to point out one thing, and this is my personal opinion. Three years ago, we had a town meeting, and a lot of, and we had a large item as one of the very last items on the warrant. A lot of people left thinking that we weren't going to get to that. We voted, I think it was quarter of one when we finally got out of there, and we voted and bought something that now we're trying to figure what to do with. I won't name names. So knowing that it's going to end at a certain time, are you going to get to a warrant, to something, especially if it's something a big dollar? I don't think we should continue to whatever hour. Yes, if it's a small item, something, but that particular case, and that's only happened as long as I've been going to the town meeting, that once. But I think it's a very important thing that happened to the town, and now we've been having meetings and trying to figure what to do with it, what to do with the property we bought. So having a, knowing that you're going to go to a town meeting and you're going to finish, so people get up and leave because they have babysitting problems, everything, and then to find out the next morning that it continued and it was voted on, I think caused a problem for the town, in my opinion. Once again, in my opinion.
Sure.
Okay? My disclaimers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scolanti. I appreciate your comments. As always, any other comments from the public? Hearing none.
Can, can you comment one more time? So, so to that issue, is there any way of, of continuing this discussion and maybe thinking about like a semi-hard stop that, you know, if it's, if it's only going to be ten more minutes, we'll continue it, but if it's, I mean, I, I just, I don't want to move into this and without, without more thought and, and information.
Okay. Tim? There's no hard stop. There is no hard stop. So as a collective group at town meeting, if there's an issue that the group collectively feels that we should move forward with, there is a vote, the majority votes, and we either move forward or we don't. It's not up to us to institute a judgmental stop time. Is it only going to take ten minutes, is it only going to take fifteen minutes? It's up to the people at town meeting to vote whether they want to continue or not. That's how it works.
I, I think that procedurally, town meeting, the assembly is entitled to decide whether it wishes to continue the business past the, the specified stop time. I think individually, from a policy standpoint, we could choose in particular circumstances to recognize that there is a significant or controversial item to be addressed, and going too late into the evening isn't perhaps the best time to get full and fair representation of the town on that matter. That's somewhat of a judgment on each of our parts as to which things qualify for that kind of consideration, but I think I would be willing, in that circumstance, to perhaps speak to the body and recommend perhaps ending the evening's business and continuing to another evening if there's an issue such as that, that would go too late into the evening and wouldn't necessarily have a complete representation on it. So I think as, I, I won't ask the board to, to formally voice such a policy, but I think each of us individually could make that decision, and when the circumstances presented themselves, we each have as much opportunity as anyone to voice our opinion as to whether to continue or not. Any other comment from the public? Yes? Name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Jalen Rowe. I live at three forty-seven Green Street. Actually, we had talked about, Senator Chandler talked about the civics education bill that passed. My, my son went, my son and daughter went to Peaslee. My daughter's in third grade there, and my son is at Melton right now. And last year, I did attend Peaslee's fifth grade class and talked about civic education. And I think if we do want the younger generation to participate in our town election and our town meetings, it would actually be great to have an earlier start time so that our children can attend it and not have it go on too late, way past their bedtime. So it might be a way to engage the younger generation if we do have it earlier, just to.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comments? Okay, I'll close the hearing. Any further discussion or comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
No, I don't believe.
Do I have a motion? Okay.
The, the article is included in the warrant as it was at your last meeting, and it's included in this meeting. The point of this public hearing tonight was just to.
Take input.
Take input.
On, on that.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you all for your input. Much appreciated. There's no action by the board on this. The article will be on the warrant, and we can, as Leslie suggested, voice our opinions at that time about the suitability of the earlier start and end time.
It's Article twenty-eight.
Which brings us to reports. Julianne?
Yes, so I attended the cultural council grant reception on February twenty-seventh, which was a lovely and inspiring event. Jason, you were there also, and I think you would concur that the NCC puts in a lot of time and effort into bringing arts and culture to our town, and I'd like to thank them for all that they do. But I also would like to ask a question because I'm uncertain of the process about this. The, the NCC and other committees in town do a lot, a lot of programs for us, and should a committee or board realize that they needed more, more funding? What is the process for them to come before? Do they come before finance? Do they come before us to request that?
John?
Well, I would anticipate through all the boards and committees that we work with, typically going back in September, October, we send out a budget manual, goes out to boards and committees, goes out to staff, and if there's a budget request to be made, then normally that would come through my office, to start at least.
So they have to make a budget request in September?
The, the manual would go out in September, and then typically there's a deadline sometime November or usually sometime late November for budget requests from all the departments and boards and committees that come into my office. That's when I assemble it and start to go through it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. All right, that's it for me.
Thank you, Julianne. Leslie?
Okay, I'm still excited about the front of town hall.
Just about done.
I look at that scaffolding, get very excited about that. I also want to thank Andy Dowd and Karen Wilbur and the police department, and the wonderful officers who were in front of Melican on voting day, March third. Really, really appreciate that. It's, it looked to be a fantastic turnout. I did see the numbers, I can't recall off the top of my head what they were, but it was wonderful to see that run so smoothly. It makes a lot of sense to have it at Melican, and on top of that, it was a professional development day for the teachers, which meant that there were no kids. So it was really a win-win, I thought. Obviously, parking was great, it went very smoothly. Andy said that, you know, they made a couple little tweaks here and there, but he tried to make it as clear as possible that when people walk in, they know which precinct is theirs. And I want to thank the, the precinct volunteers too. They really do a great job. They look very serious, they take it very seriously, so very, very happy about how, how all that went. And I want to thank the residents for coming out to vote. That is your right. Privilege, so I want to thank everyone for that. Also, crosswalks, my usual thing I want to mention, Chief Lifer, now I'm going to bring this up every couple months now. Obviously, it's just going to get busier with people biking and running and walking, and I still see people whipping by the crosswalks, and of course, there's some nice person that does stop like they're supposed to, but someone around them doesn't know why they've stopped, so they right, go around the right, and they keep going. So that is obviously an accident waiting to happen, but I don't know what else we can really do. Things are, the crosswalks are clear from what I can see. Is there anything else that is in the queue to being done as far as crosswalks?
Well, as the weather gets a little warm, we'll do some traffic enforcement.
Okay.
On the troublesome crosswalks.
Okay. That sounds great. I appreciate that. Again, we've got the hands-free legislation now. I don't know if you've seen anything or.
Sheesh, a fish in a barrel.
Oh, boy. Yep. I see a lot of people looking down at phones when they're driving still. You know they're holding their phones.
I'm going to steal you another one.
Okay. So thank you very much for all your efforts with that. I appreciate that as well. And one final note is the Northborough Food Pantry was restashed recently by the Z School. It seems like the, the elementary schools do a good job at trying to have fundraisers that benefit the, the food pantry, and I know the kids take a lot of pride in watching the stuff build up and then taking it over there and, and working with the food pantry volunteers. So I want to thank them very much for that. That is my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
I also wanted to thank Andy Dowd and everybody else that was involved in the election. I myself went down and voted, and all the volunteers there and, and the precinct workers did just an absolutely tremendous job. The police officer did a great job managing the, the inflows and outflows at the, the middle school. Had a good chance to chat with Andy Dowd for a couple minutes afterwards, and I think it was a great practice run for the presidential election coming up in November. So Andy was, was very confident that we'll be able to replicate the, the smoothness of the operation that we had for this election come November. And I also, as I went to vote, wanted to remind everybody that we do have a local election coming up on May twelfth. You know, we, we have discussions here quite a bit about advertising the, the date of town meeting and what we can do to get that out to people. I think it's as equally important to remind people to vote in their local elections on May twelfth. It does have an impact. It does, it does, it does matter. And sometimes we get, we get shockingly low turnout, so if you can get out and vote on May twelfth, that would be great. I also wanted to thank the superintendent for being proactive with the schools on the coronavirus issues that's been going out. He's, as a parent, we've been getting emails and notifications from him all through the week on what the town and the school system's doing to, to keep the schools clean and, and make sure that the, the virus doesn't enter into, to our school systems. And then lastly, we talk often about dogs and leash issues.
Yes.
And somebody shared with me a story about a, a young boy that was bitten at Lincoln Street by a dog that was off-leash. It happens, everybody thinks their dog is the greatest dog in the world, it will never bite anybody else. Your dog is the greatest dog in the world to you. To everybody else in the world, your dog is a dog, and what dogs do is bite people. So that's why it is important to keep your dogs on a leash. There was no, no information around the dog. The, the poor kid had to go and get rabies shots because there was no information. It's, it's, I know people think their dogs aren't going to do anything but they're dogs. So, so please, keep your dogs on leashes, especially in public, especially at, at, at grammar schools. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I have a few things. One, I've been asked by Town Clerk Andy Dowd to make an announcement. The 2020 U.S. Census will soon be underway. You should receive a mailing by U.S. mail between March twelfth and twentieth. When you receive that, you can respond online, by phone, or by mail. The census results help determine how billions of dollars in federal funding flow into states and communities each year. The results determine how many seats in Congress each state gets, and it's mandated by the U.S. Constitution in Article One, Section Two. The U.S. has counted its population every ten years since seventeen ninety. If you'd like more information, there will be an informational forum at the Northborough Public Library at thirty-four Main Street on Thursday, March twelfth. It's in the afternoon at one-thirty P.M. They'll provide a little more information about that. There will be resources available provided by the town of Northborough to assist residents with their response. Public computers will be available by appointment at the library and the senior center if you wish to make use of those resources to submit your census information. The census submissions, they're asked to respond by April first. I don't know if there's any significance to that being April Fool's Day, but that is the date. If you like more information, there's a public notice on the town website. It's been circulated through the town news email, and you can call the town clerk's office at five oh eight three nine three five zero zero one, or the Northborough Free Library at five oh eight three nine three five zero two five, extension five. So, the census is coming, please submit your information. Additionally, as Julianne mentioned, on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, attended cultural council's grantee reception at the library, and I just want to thank the cultural council members and Selvi Oyola, the chair, for all the work they've done over the year to put that together, to evaluate the programs and make the, the grants. I also just wanted to acknowledge that Representative Danielle Gregoire was also present that evening. On Thursday, March fifth, that was just last week, the planning board met, made their final revisions to the master plan and voted to accept the master plan with those revisions. So I almost fell off my chair when the vote was taken. So that is now finally completed. Town planner Kathy Jubert was making note of the final changes to be made, and we'll get that out to the printer. We should have copies probably online and some in print form shortly in the future, and we can now kind of begin the process to consider an implementation committee as the next step in the town plan. On Tuesday, March seventeenth, the planning board will have a public hearing about their zoning articles, which will appear on this town meeting warrant. That will be held here at the town hall, I believe, at seven P.M. So Tuesday, March seventeenth, if you have an interest in, in zoning articles, that would be the time to attend the hearing and offer your input. And that concludes my report for this evening. John, anything?
No report this evening.
Very good. Onto public comments? Any public comments? Yes, Chief? Chief Rinty?
It's burning season. You need to be careful. We chased two yesterday that got away from people and chased one today. No, chased two today, I'm sorry, we had a second one just before I came. So just please use caution, even if, you know, make sure you check on our, you have to email us, and you'll get an email back that says, yes, we're burning today, or no, we're not. Even if we say yes, if the wind picks up afternoon, please shut down your burning, put it out. That's what's really doing it, is when the wind kicks up and it's pushing the embers all over the place. Doesn't take much. A gentleman today said, I turned around, I turned back around, and it was all the way up the hill. I said, yep, that's what it does. So just please keep in mind, be careful. Very dry out there.
Thank you, Chief. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Onto new business. Item one, close the town meeting warrant. John?
So in your packet, last, at your last meeting, you received a summary listing of the warrant articles that we were developing. In your packet this evening are those same articles with all of the explanations and verbiage, and at this stage, they are a draft, and the way the process works is the board votes to close the warrant this evening, and then between now and your next meeting, town council reviews it, we make any final tweaks to any of the numbers or the explanations. By and large, it's town council's comments that get incorporated now, so you may have a placeholder that says, you know, the town meeting warrant to make an amendment to something, and there may be some additional language that they would include. But basically, what you have before you this evening is the complete warrant. We aren't, we haven't had any, added any additional articles other than the summary that you've seen from your previous meeting, and by and large, you know, it's a pretty straightforward warrant. We have the, the budget articles, the capital articles. the, uh, the budget articles, the capital articles, um, and then you have community preservation, and then eight zoning articles at the end. So, uh, at this point, uh, I would recommend that you close the warrant and, uh, allow me to send it off to council to finalize everything for your final approval and, uh, vote to post at your next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any, uh, questions, comments? Hearing none. Is there, do we have a motion for this? Or is this just by?
Yes, you, you need, you need to vote to close the warrant.
Close the warrant, yep. Do we have a motion somewhere here? Tim, do you have it or no?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to close the April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty town meeting warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor? Very good. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Uh, interview subcommittee recommendation for appointments to the Community Affairs Committee and Council on Aging. Leslie?
Yes, uh, first of all, I want to thank the volunteers who've come forward for these positions. I move the board vote to appoint Tricia Olivall to the Community Affairs Committee for a partial three-year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, as recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Muriel Suenor to the Council on Aging for a partial two-year term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, as recommended by the interview subcommittee.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Excellent. We thank those volunteers for coming forward. Uh, execution of cemetery deed one zero nine four.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deed one zero nine four.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Any other business to come before the board, John?
Uh, just a need for a brief executive session.
Okay, we will hold an executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Subsection Three, litigation, City of Marlboro, Westerly Sewer Treatment Plant. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter a new executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Subsection Three, litigation, City of Marlboro, Westerly Sewer Treatment Plant. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Julian?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the board will return from executive session only to adjourn open session. Thank you all.